Everyone, I'd like to call to get to order our Commissioner briefing on April 1st. Thanks for joining us. Commissioners, does anyone have any items that we need to discuss or review on our 5:00 PM agenda? Any items to add? All right, with that said, we will move into our staff updates and Avril will kick us off with the Helene update.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
As you do, we'll go ahead on Helene update and get started with debris. And there's Dane, thank you Dane.
That was the last call for folks to bring debris, storm-related debris out to the right of way. And Ashbrit through the Corps of Engineers has been picking up throughout the month of March. So yesterday was effectively the last day for right-of-way debris removal process. So where we're at now is our assessment teams have been out in the field, working behind Ashbrit as they have called for closure on final pass for debris removal. And we have been assessing those, identifying hotspots, and actually taking, still taking calls from the call center with areas that still have debris along the right-of-way. So while we are encouraging everyone, please do not bring additional debris out to the right-of-way at this point, that process, the main mission is complete. Now, there is still work ongoing with the hotspots that we're providing FEMA to the Corps, to Ashbrit, their contractors in the field. So that debris removal is still in process for these hotspots, but we implore everyone, please do not move debris out to the right-of-way. What we do encourage everybody to do is sign up for private property debris removal. That's what we want to encourage everybody to do. If you still have storm-related debris on your property, please sign up for PPDR. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, we're gonna, we're gonna keep hammering on that. So over 1.2 million cubic yards have been picked up through the right-of-way debris removal, including the City of Asheville, Black Mountain, and unincorporated areas of the county. So private property debris removal?
Yes ma'am.
Talk a little bit about the zones that are closed out?
Yes, so partial closeouts in most zones, so A is closed out when you think about A, Lester, Alexander areas. F is the Kandler area, we have, when you see the hash lines on this map, those are areas that third pass was made, but our assessment teams have identified additional debris that's in those zones. So areas G, when you start rotating around to the southeast, that's Arden area. H is Fairview general area, and most of those zones have closed out for final pass. E is Swananoa area, you can see E3 there, has a hash line, so there's been additional debris identified in the right-of-way. And D is Barnersville area, rotating back around to like Jupiter in the C areas. So again, hash lines mean there's been debris identified, and those hot lists or hotspots have been provided to FEMA, which will go to the Corps, which will go to Ashbrit in the field. And there is, there's a tool that our Cape team has put together for residents to go and check out this map online. And that's under buckhamcounty.org in the Hurricane Helene Recovery Update. So PPDR, or private property debris removal, including demolition, continues, that work is ongoing through June 30th. Applications keep rolling in hot and heavy. We're up to 4,000, over 4,500 total applications for PPDR as of March 31st. And we want to remind everybody again, all residents and local businesses must apply by April 15th to complete the application process. That's a by, April 15th. We also want to encourage everybody, start now, start early. There's, there's some documentation that we need, that could take some time, some back and forth with our representatives at Tetra Tech to make sure your application is complete. So please, start this process now as soon as possible. Some popular ways to do that include applying online at buckhamcounty.org, or on the Helene Debris Removal tab. Folks, our residents can also call at 828-250-6100 and hit 2 for debris. This call center is open seven days a week, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So please, get these private property debris removal applications submitted by April 15th.
Dane, do we think it's possible that that deadline would get extended? By any point in time?
I don't have any information to support that it would get extended, Commissioner. That's, that's our hard deadline to make sure that the folks that do apply by April 15th, there's a process on the back end of that. So those applications are submitted, we vet those, Tetra Tech helps us vet those, those are sent to FEMA to make sure for eligibility criteria. They're sent to the Corps, the Corps has to then scope that, and add that to the mission in the field for budget, and making sure that the contractors are getting that in their hands. So there's, there's those additional steps to meet that June 30th deadline, that's why that April 15th is really critical. Now residential and commercial demolition is another loaded topic. So Hurricane Helene demolition requests are available to both residents and local businesses. This is the same timeframe for applications, we have to have those by April 15th, in order for that to comply with the timeline of June 30th for the actual work to happen. Demolition applications require a few more steps and a few, few more check-the-boxes, if you will, to make sure that that's a complete application. Some of those include signed rite of entries or ROEs. All applicants must prove that they have filed through their insurance first, and provide evidence of denial or claims paid. So I know we've seen for a whole different magnet, you know, plethora of reasons that insurance insurers have been inundated, you know, have been and still are. So there has been some lead time in our residents getting notification back that their claim was denied, or settling that claim through their insurance company. So that, that takes time. Statements from any liens or mortgage that demolition is allowed, so that's a notification from the lien holder. If that's a bank, or a mortgage company, whatever that is for the, for the property, that they are acknowledging that that is an acceptable thing, that the, the structure is demolished. And inspection of the structure in the field. So as of March 31st, demolition requests by residents and local businesses is up to 316, and with 45 active demolition permits in processes, in process. So as we're, as we're going through those, the residents or the businesses have submitted PPDR, they've checked that they feel like they have an eligible structure that was damaged through the storm. And we're going through, and the authority having jurisdiction in this case for the permitting process is our Asheville-Bunkham Air Quality Local Office. So we've been working with Ashville and their team, and they are helping us through the permitting process, the asbestos was a key piece of that. So any of these structures that are eligible for this, that have self, you know, volunteered and reported for the demo that they're requesting, all that material that's gonna be demolished is gonna be treated as an asbestos-containing material project. So they will adhere to those, you know, continuous wetting, polywrapping in the trucks, in the bags, goosenecking, tagging, all those things are gonna be applicable to this project. So you, most of the time in these projects, you've got a year prior to, or if it's after, most of the time you're safe with asbestos was used or not. All these projects will be approached with, that they do contain asbestos, whether they do or not. So talking about that, the demolition process takes longer than other debris removal activities for, for a few reasons. Local, state, and federal requirements relating to asbestos management, which we just talked about. EHP, Environmental and Historic Preservation Review, that has to be another box that's checked by that group to ensure that we're complying with that, or if there needs to be additional subject matter experts looking at these individual projects. Approval of liens and insurance, liability to fire, structural stability, unsafe systems, an electrical system is an example of that, and various eligibility requirements. So I said that to say, when we talk with our partners at North Carolina Emergency Management or FEMA level, they reiterate to us through these, through other storms in this process, demo projects take longer to get off the ground and to get approved, to make sure that they are eligible through the FEMA process. But also to make sure that permits are in place, and that that work is scoped effectively. So that's, we've been talking about demo a while, I want to make sure that this board understood some of the things that have to happen before that demo work actually begins. So active PPDR debris removal projects, right now, Ashbrit has completed close to 1,400 cleanups on the PPDR program. We want to remind everyone, if they have questions about the actual work going on in the field, to please email the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers at this link that we provided in this presentation. And also, please feel free to call the One Buckham Call Center at 828-250-6100 and select option 2. Waterway debris removal, they are moving fast. So there's a lot of material getting moved out, we've been very encouraged with the amount of effort that's been placed in the waterways. And currently, we have, they have successfully removed close to 700,000 cubic yards of debris from the waterway. So that's a, that's a pretty impactful number when you, when you see that. Cruisers, and that's 50 crews, around 125 pieces of equipment that are in the water currently. And they're working in feeding tributaries, including, or also to include Beechey Creek, Kane Creek, French Broad River, Ivy Creek, and the Swananoa. So it's hard to drive very far without seeing some effort going on in our, in our waterways. Again, a reminder for the FEMA dictated expedited target dates that we talk about. So right-of-way debris removal, that, that's, that's done. It's in the cleanup process with punch lists, and that work is being finished up. I want to make a note too, for everyone, that this is the season where we're out in our yards, we're cleaning up, we're trimming our shrubs, we're cutting some limbs. Please seek your local programs for advice on how to properly manage those materials. In unincorporated Buckham, we have the landfill, we take those, you know, leaves, brush, those type things, we have programs that are available for that. City of Asheville, reach out to them to make sure that residents, you're doing the things that you need to do to get it to the curb, and make sure that that material's getting collected through those programs. And let's see, waterway debris removal, all visible hazard, the deadline for that is to be completed by May 1st. All waterway debris removal ends June 1st. So highly visible areas, pockets that we all see as we're traversing through the county, that's May 1st, and also June 1st, and it gets into the more of the tributary feeder areas. They're already working those areas, but that's the overall deadline date is June 1st for all waterway mission to be complete. Private property debris removal, PPDR and demolition, deadline to apply, April 15th. Pay your taxes and apply to PPDR, that's what we gotta remember. And all PPDR debris removal completed by June 30th, that is the deadline for that ongoing mission.
Dane, before you go on, if you go back to your comment around, people are getting out in the yards now and cutting limbs and bringing their debris to the front. But one of the things we need to be careful of is that is green. It is not storm-related at this point, and it probably would not get picked up. So if you will speak a little bit about the greenery that's on the curbs?
Yes ma'am, it's, it's an indicator, and is concerning too, when you think about eligibility for this FEMA program as far as storm-related debris. If we're putting that debris out, and it's, it's green, that's, I'm not saying always, it could have been mixed, but that's, that's what FEMA and the Corps is gonna look at, say that, that pile right there really does not look like it was storm-related. So it's a great point, Avril, that make sure that the material out is storm-related, and really the message is, please don't put any other material out in the right-of-way period. And consult with your local jurisdiction, whether it be sanitation department, if it's county, we've got the landfill, there's Riverside Stunt Dump, or your town, Public Works. Make sure you understand how to get your yard trimmings, yard debris collected, so thank you for that. Yeah, and I'll try to answer any questions y'all may have.
Questions for Dane?
Um, Dane, I'll just note that we've had a lot of folks that are concerned about wildfire activity in the area. I know Commissioner Wells has directed folks, and I think, know we all are directing folks to private property debris removal. I don't know if you want to speak to how that program is a, is a way that's provided to help folks get that debris out of their yard, and protect them in their homes, and create that defensible space. But I just want to elevate that for folks who are thinking about how this impacts wildfire activity in the, in the area. I know we're about to hear a lot more about that, but I don't know if you want to speak to that at all?
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Commissioner, that's softball, Ryan. We, and that all works together, right Commissioner? Absolutely, thank you for that point. So please sign up for PPDR. If you have storm-related debris, all that's gonna do, especially on your parcel, is number one, make access a challenge for our emergency people to get to, but also create possibility for additional fuel. So want to get those areas maintained, now it's not, it's not a landscape project, this is related to storm debris, but that's what we need, sign up. Get this, get this application done by April 15th, sign up for PPDR, and let's get on that list to get that debris removed to help towards those goals. Thank you for the question.
Dane, with the April 15th deadline for the private property debris removal and seeing over 4,000 applications, is there's an estimated timeline? I mean, I know it says June 30th, but will that continue until completed?
June 30th is a hard deadline, is our understanding, yes ma'am Chair. And everybody's working very diligently, because to make the math work on the back end, 4,500 applications, well that's gotta go to FEMA, that's gotta go to Corps, that's gotta go to the fields to get picked up. So, you know, our, our partners, Tetra Tech, who's helping with the intake, vet these applications, they're actually helping us bundle those and send those to FEMA, then to the Corps. So there's a major push right now, like we gotta maximize that, last week they sent 470, I think by Friday, that got to the Corps' hands, so that's good. We're just having to, everybody's having to push hard, because it takes all that sequence to make sure that we're lining up at that deadline, but that is, that is certainly a hard deadline.
Okay.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dane?
Already over 1,000 yards have already been cleared up, so if the 5,000, 1,000 has already been cleared up.
Right, okay, that's a lot.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, thank you so much Dane, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And next on wildfire, you just talked about that defensible space, so Ryan Cole is gonna speak about wildfire updates and prevention.
Ms. Pender, Commissioner, Chair Edwards Commissioners, thank you for having me today. We'll go through and talk a little bit about, not waterway debris removal, but wildfires. And all of you have seen a lot of activity on the news lately about wildfires, we had some significant fires, not, we, not our largest in western North Carolina. We had that several years ago, 2016, we had the Party Rock Fire, but the, we got very close to that, we had some serious containment on that over the weekend with the humidity coming up, the rain come in. However, the winds that followed that dries that out very quickly. So, but it allows the crews to get in and do some significant containment as they're pushing through. So, as I was saying, the elements that drive the wildfire more than anything are the humidity and the increased winds and the temperature. That's the three factors that we have that's going on. So as our humidity drops down, and especially once we get below 30 and more, especially 20% humidity is when we have over multiple days, and the sun dries that out, is whenever we have significant issues. We have two wildfire seasons, we have a spring and fall wildfire season. Right now, we're in the spring fire season, and that will end about May 15th, when everything starts turning green. So you can pretty much guess, Mother's Day, they say don't plant anything until after Mother's Day, and wildfire season be gone after Mother's Day, because everything starts greening up, warming up, and our humidity increases pretty substantially. Our fall fire season, starting in October, will run through December with our busiest months in the October-November range, because we were coming, that's the warmest areas and the lowest humidity. And other issues that we have within that are the invasive species that we have, and some of the developments. So whenever we say this, we, we've had fires in, we've had fires forever, since, since we figured out how to start fires, we've had fires. But the issue we have now is homes. And so as people build homes in some of these areas, we love our mountains, we love living in an area where we can go out and see our mountains. However, sometimes whenever we're living in the mountains, and, and we have our driveway that gets, gets us to the mountains, if a fire truck can't get up your driveway, if the, the debris or the mountains are all around your house, then we don't have a defensible space. And so that, that creates an issue. We've had a lot of weather volatility in the last few years, back in 2016, the Party Rock Fire, we had significant weather events with dryness. So if we, if we have another very dry summer going into the fall, that could be an issue as well. Right now, what you're seeing is not, especially with these fires, that's not Helene debris that's burning. The Helene debris that's on the ground that's burning now is hardwood predominantly. And so when we look at hardwoods with oak and hickory, it's gonna take a couple of years for that to get to a point where it's dried out enough for it to burn in a solid state. When we have poplars and pines, you're looking at about a five to 10-year degradation on those, where hickory and oak, you're looking at 10 to 20-year degradation on those. So we've got a problem for the next 20 years that we're gonna be faced with. What we have an issue with right now is access, because we have so much debris down, whereas used to, we could build a fire line in 30 minutes, it's taken three hours to go in and cut in a fire line. And so that's some of the things that, that we're running into now. Here you'll see a picture, this is a good example of a fire break that has been put in. So they put this fire line in probably with a dozer, and that's, that's what we're looking at, is having fire breaks that we can defend that. We also need the defensible space around the structures, and people to remove debris. Dane talked about the property, private property debris removal, it's imperative that people get that, sign up for that, to be able to get that debris out away from their homes, and be able to have that coming to get away, out of their property. There's also fire-resistant building practices, we have, we have different types of building materials that are much more flammable than others. For example, we have vinyl siding versus hardy plank, hardy plank's concrete, so it's not gonna burn nowhere near like vinyl siding would. And so there's other means that people can take. The biggest thing that we're wanting to do right now is really educate the public, because we feel like that this is on the forefront of everybody's mind. We want the public to be able to take action on their own, and we're gonna talk about some of those things that we can do with that. As we go in, we put in fire breaks, there's also prescribed burning that can occur, we see that a lot of times more so in the national forests, and, but a lot of the issues that we have that's threatening homes is on private property. Here's a great example, whenever we say defensible space, people can go and go to Firewise, and there's a lot of good educational material out there within Firewise. This is a picture that is in there that shows the first five feet, around the first five feet, we want to remove all of the ignitable material, such as clean our gutters out, get stuff out away from the, directly away from the home, and other areas that, other things that we have that's combustible right up a ramp next to the home. Because if we have a fire coming up, then it's gonna obviously ignite those things. The next thing is we want our 30-foot space to be able to be cleared out, so that it cannot carry up to the home, to the foundation. Last week, we had a, we had a fire in Lester, we had 22 homes that we, that the firefighters had to go in and create defendable space around. Friday, we had another fire in Garen Creek, that we had a couple of homes that we had to go, we could not create defensible space around one of the homes, because the, the growth was up the decking of the home. And so these are things that we need to be mindful of, and get that done in advance, because if we're not doing this in advance, firefighters might not have the time or opportunity to be able to create that defensible space whenever an active fire is occurring. Optimally, we want 100 foot away from the home. You might not have 100 foot away from your home, but go to your property line to make sure you have that. Have green grass that's growing out there, fire's not gonna generally burn across green grass. Make sure that you don't have like mountain laurels and rhododendrons, as we love those, and they look beautiful around our homes, they're also full of oil, and they burn very rapidly and very fast. And so we want to make sure we have that defensible space around that. In our Hazard Mitigation Plan that was produced in 2021, we identified from 2001 to 2018, we had just over 3,700 acres burned, out of 340 fires from 2001 to 2018 in Buckham County. As you see, most of those are in the unincorporated areas, because most of our municipalities do not allow burning inside their area. We identified 73,000 homes that were at risk in 2021 with 151,000 population. So now, with some of the work that we have, and today, I have Jenny Deason and Nicholas Shanahan with North Carolina Institute of Climate Studies, NC State University, and NOAA here with us. And they have been able to help us do some research, some significant research that's been phenomenal, that I'm gonna talk a little bit more about. We're seeing about a 30% increase over this 73,000 that are at risk now. Now, whether that be from Helene debris blowdown, which we feel like that a lot of that is due to that, but it's also due to some more extensive research that they're, they're able to produce, that we didn't have available to us in 2021. The Buck, the county role in this, according to North Carolina General Statute 153A, 233, we have authority to establish and oversee firefighting and prevention services under the coordination of the fire marshal. Fire districts, we have 19 fire districts that's out carrying out suppression and prevention, and all of those do forestry firefighting, and are equipped and trained in forestry firefighting. And so they, they assist with that, with the North Carolina Forest Service, who, and so we have, we have up that 100 foot from the home, then after that becomes the authority of the North Carolina Forest Service beyond that 100 foot. Within that, it's also, we have forest lands, the North Carolina Forest Service has about 5,000 acres in Buckham County, and over, out of the 14 million in the state itself. And the U.S. Forest Service has about 28,000 in Buckham County. So as we look at some of the areas, Bent Creek, for example, Bent Creek, you have U.S. Forest Service land, you have North Carolina State Forest Service land, which is North Carolina Arboretum. And then you have National Park Service land, which is the Blue Ridge Parkway, and then you have private land. So that, fires in those areas can be multi-jurisdictional, and multi-agencies that are responding to that. Some of the collaboration opportunities we have is with the North Carolina Forest Service, North Carolina Emergency Management, NC State University, who are friends who are here with us today, North Carolina Institute of Climate Studies, National Center for Environmental Information with NOAA, United States Forest Service FEMA, and our Southern Research Station. With this, we, we are looking at GIS analysis that's being conducted, that's already been conducted, and future GIS analysis that we can look at, wildland urban interface identification, where those houses are, that are urban interface issues, fuel modeling. And when we talk about fuel modeling, that's the moisture that we have, moisture content in the fuel. fuel modeling, that's the moisture that we have, moisture content in the fuel itself, but also the temperatures and humidity around that gives us fuel modeling. I was talking earlier about the fire, the Party Rock Fire, it took three days for them to determine fuel modeling because they would say that the fire is going to be at this point in two days, and it was past that point already. And so, they had to do, they had to change their fuel modeling to California fuel modeling to be able to predict that fire. And so, depending on what's going on, it was not normal for us. Climate analysis and monitoring, fuel moisture monitoring with the fuel itself, looking at that, excess identification, how do we get to some of these places, LiDAR and imagery analysis. Currently, the North Carolina Emergency Management is doing LiDAR flows, which is going to provide us significant information with tree blowdown, where those are, and topography, and we're hoping to be able to get three-dimensional imagery there, to be able to have that. Public education is very key to what we're doing because we want the public to do their own mitigation of their homes. We need people to do their own mitigation around their homes and be able to support that, especially while we have PPDR available to us, and they can contact that to get that assistance to prevent the debris and have that defensible space. And we're looking at fire service training to be able to prepare the fire departments more with what we, what information we have and get tools in their hand to be able to respond to this. With the haline impact, it's estimated that seven, we have lost seventeen percent of the forest in Buncombe County due to blowdown. We're very fortunate to have lost seventeen percent when we look at our neighbors in Mitchell County who have lost forty-one percent of their forest. So, this is, this is a regional problem with the trees that are down, and that is, as I stated, that's going to cause, continue to cause a significant damage issue. The picture you're seeing up here now is up in, it's on the Rims Creek side of Elk Mountain Senic Highway. The road in the very top left corner is Elk Mountain Senic Highway. So, all of these road beds in the bottom were previously, you could access, they could drive a fire truck, I mean, a large fire truck, all the way from Rims Creek Fire Department to Elk Mountain Senic Highway before haline hit. Now, there's so much debris up there, it's going to be years before they can clear that out of those road beds. And so, and within a couple of years, it's going to be a significant fuel load that we're going to be having to manage. This is a very good example of where we're seeing this with the blowdown. Most of our blowdown that we're seeing is on the south slope, and that's also going to be the lowest or the driest area because that's getting the most sun, and so, we're seeing a lot of that. This is also information that the collaborative has been able to put together, and this was from, I'm sorry.
Burnleaf.
USDA, and their shop as well was able to put, collect a lot of data and try to identify, and if you'll see on the left, it goes from none to severe on the blowdown, looking at some of the blowdown, and then we go wet to dry. And so, then that models that up. And so, we identified with that data the residents that went from the highest risk of four down to one, and on that, we were able to put that on a GIS map, and you'll see this in red down to green. So, we have pretty significant risk in our area because you see a lot of orange and red. You notice, you're looking at it, and you're saying, "Why does it go north to south, east to west?" That's your, that's our corridors. Any of our maps where we show our population, it's within those, the I-40, I-26 corridors of what you're seeing. Because most of our, a lot of our homes do have that population or do have risk because we've got a lot of homes that are in areas that create risk. We have higher risk. The ones that are in red are up on ridge tops predominantly. And so, right now, we have the National Guard that's evaluating these, and they're going through and looking at this through GIS. These, all of these, these that we saw, the fours and threes, they're evaluating that utilizing GIS and windshield surveys by going out and looking at some of these to see if they have defensible space. Then, that will allow us to be able to push that information more out to the community so that they can work on some of that. National Guard also did some significant work evaluating accessibility in the watershed, beetroot watershed specifically because there was significant blowdown up there, and so, they assisted with that. It's weeks' worth of work up there just getting in. It took them several weeks just to evaluate that.
Just going to pause you real fast. Is that GIS map, is it available online for the public to zoom in on and use as a research tool or?
Not yet. And that's where we want to get to because what we want to be able to do, and we were just, we've been discussing this, is we want to be able to get to a point where, I don't want you just to be able to see a map and see that there's something here. I want you to know what to do when you see that. And so, we want to be able to identify that. We're utilizing some tools. National Guard is actually taking pictures or they're taking some of these shots and taking pictures of to say, "Here's some of the issues," or "Here's some of the concerns," that kind of thing. So, we're hoping that we can incorporate that in, and then also be able to push that out to the fire departments where they can do follow-up and work with that and work with the community members with some of the things there. Because we want to make sure that people know what you do to be able to mitigate that out, not just, "Okay, my house is red," but now what do you do if your house is red? The other thing that we want to be able to do that we're working on is creating a self-assessment. So, if you're pulling it up, you can look at your house, and you can say, "Okay, here's some of the things I need to walk around my house," and I'm putting this stuff down in an app, or I'm writing it down on a piece of paper, and you're able to say, "Okay, yep, check, I've got this. No, I don't have this," or "I need to work on this," or "I need some more yard work," or "I need to call in a professional." So, we're wanting to get there, but we want to make sure that we have all the tools in place by the time we get there. We also have other community resources. The North Carolina Forest Service has significant resources out there for outdoor, to prevent fires. We also, if we are doing any burning, we have a local number, and it goes to Air Police Control where they can contact that to be able to get, to make sure it is a burning day, whether or not it is. For fire-resistant landscaping, North Carolina State Extension provides information on plants that are more resistant, that would be better to be planted around the area, and how to do landscaping and maintenance decisions to make sure that we're doing, making those to be more effective for fire-resistant control measures. And then, for a homeowner fire risk assessment, and this is one of the things that I was talking about there, North Carolina Forest Service has that where you can go in and pull that up, and Firewise also has that. And so, we're trying to get that detailed around to make sure that we're using the right tools. Again, this is another great picture from Firewise. I urge all of you to Google Firewise whenever you out, sounds like an owl with, and if y'all remember years ago, we did have an owl that was with Smokey the bear, and they, we had the Hoot Owl that provided some education there. But we got Firewise, the biggest thing is we want that thirty-foot. We want to make sure your house is clean there. But if you've got thirty-foot of space around your house, then the fire's not going to get up next to your house. And if we've got, then we go to a hundred-foot of the property line after that. Because, I mean, we could have some combustibles out around there, but if that can be controlled, then you can. The problem is, if the fire's coming very rapidly, we're not going to be able to go create that defensible space like we did last week, and we're not going to be able to make sure that people are safe in there. Other additional resources, Dane talked about private property debris removal. Make sure that you're contacting, going in and registering for that. Here is a great opportunity for those people that do not have that defensible space around their home that, because of debris, and it needs to be because of debris, because of that debris, we can contact PPDR and be able to get, make application to that, or contact 250-6100 and press two. Other thing that we want to make sure that people are aware of is the private roads and bridges. Because emergency vehicles do not have access to your home, then it's going to be very difficult for them to get there, to defend it, and be able to assist with that. That access is not just the private roads and bridge that you drive on, but it's also the overhanging limbs and trees because we need a twelve-foot by twelve-foot space at a minimum for fire trucks to get down a driveway that's cleared out. That means you've got to be able to drive on twelve-foot of space, but the vehicle itself going down through there that you've got there. Some key takeaways, make sure that we're removing, we need to make sure we're removing combustibles within thirty feet of the home. Create a defensible space up to a hundred feet or the property line. Ensure that there's clear access to the home, through the driveway. Clear trails and breaks that are on property. If you've got, if you've got trails or logging roads that's on your property mid-slope, go ahead and clear them out because that's going to make it much easier for firefighters to go in and create a fire line if there is a fire down below that area of the home. Make sure we're signing up for private property debris removal to get that debris removed from, from the, around the home, if it, if we do have debris there. Make sure we're signing up for the private roads and bridge program. You can go on the Buncombe County website to access either one of those. We need to make sure that we're adhering to the burn ban and warnings. The majority of fires are human caused, and most of the time, it's not something that people are doing something intentional. It was, it's usually a mistake, but a mistake can lead to loss of other people's homes and lives, and we need to be very mindful of that. We need always confirm that open burning is allowed, whether that's from burn ban or with the air quality that's available. Questions?
Thank you, Ryan, for all this very important information. So, beyond the private property debris removal, because clearly that has to be caused by haline in order to utilize that, but just thinking of for others in the community that need assistance, I was thinking at one time that Firewise, that there might have been some funding that helped homeowners and HOAs creating that defensible space. Do you know anything about that? And I'm not sure how long ago that was, but are you aware?
So, currently, we are looking at a program that might be available through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program to be able to do some defensible space from around the homes to be able to allow that. That would be at a maximum of a hundred feet from the home. That would also have to be a specific community that we're doing, that we're looking at. We're in discussion right now with FEMA and North Carolina Emergency Management. I was actually on a phone call today with the FCO and Region Four Administrator that they understand our concerns with this, and they're trying to look at solutions for the future that can best mitigate our hazards and provide the most protection for our community.
Thank you. Well, that sounds promising. And then, another question around kind of that community preparedness. I know I've had multiple conversations with the community just around, I think it's called Community Emergency Response Teams.
Yes.
And there's been a lot of conversation within communities with an interest in that kind of training and being provided. I think the short name for it's CERT.
Yep.
Can you speak some to that, and is that something we're looking into?
Sure. So, CERT was a program that was created in Los Angeles back in the early eighties, late seventies, early eighties, and it's for community emergency response teams. It's to help people, help their neighbors within the first seventy-two hours. It's also to encourage people, just like with the, we're talking about creating defensible space, that's something that we need to do individually to take care of ourselves. We tell people, "Be prepared for seventy-two hours. We need you to be able to take care of yourself for seventy-two hours. Have food, water, have these things ready for seventy-two hours." The CERT team helps to promote that. They also do training for basic first aid and be able to know some of the resources that are not just outside, not the ones outside of the community, but how, who are our neighbors and what resources they have. We saw this during haline. Neighbors was bringing tractors in. They knew who, we know who's got a tractor. We know who's got a chainsaw. We know who's, who's got different equipment in our neighborhood, and so, we're activating that and doing that. That's a whole lot of what CERT does. We saw that very ergonomic, or very well during haline that people did that. And so, there is currently, the, our emergency management has sent out communication to the fire departments to do some CERT Train the Trainer information. Actually, I've got that. I think it's next, I don't have my phone with me. I think next week, they're looking at doing some of that CERT training, or trying to get that to get, oh, I do have it. But yes, there is, they're in the process of that, and I can get you some more information on that as Bradley's working on putting that together with, with the fire departments and in conjunction with the fire departments to be able to go out. And I'll get you some more information.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ryan? Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
My last topic was with Stacy Wood to give an update on the disaster recovery centers in our community.
Good afternoon. So, just a quick update on the transition from the disaster recovery centers over to the Haline Resource Center, which will be a county-operated resource center. So, the Weaverville Town Hall DRC is officially closing on April fourth, and shortly thereafter, the Fairview DRC at the Fairview Library will close on April eleventh. So, as the Weaverville DRC transitions, that, the staff working at that location will then move to the Haline Resource Center, which will be located at ninety-four Cox Avenue. The, this will be a soft launch while we get up and running, but the team is on target for meeting the, for opening the center officially on April fourteenth. So, both the Weaverville Town Hall location and the Fairview Library location, all the staff working at those locations will now be located, well, on the fourteenth, will be located at ninety-four Cox Avenue at the county-operated Haline Resource Center. Those hours will be eight to five, Monday through Friday. It's a very convenient location, right on the bus line, near the bus station. Free parking will be across the street, and I think all, the team feels confident that we can meet that target of an official open date of April fourteenth. Are there any additional questions?
I'm going to put you on the spot. What Stacy's not giving me the backstory on is that FEMA is closing their DRCs, and I think you all are seeing that. And the county is stepping in and opening up a center where we still have face-to-face operations for residents that want to see if somebody in person and not just go online. There'd be some people there that they can see eight to five, Monday to Friday. So, and this location is the former tax office. The tax is moving out. We're going to repurpose that to serve our residents so that they can have access to someone face-to-face.
Thank you, thank you all for doing that because that's really important for the community. And the disaster case managers, will somebody be there with that as well, or is that still a good way to contact somebody with the disaster case management?
Yes. So, disaster case management, FEMA individual assistance, PPDR potentially will be located there, HMGP, Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. All of those resources will be co-located in one location, and that will be the primary onsite location to access any of those resources, including disaster case management. They will still be operating some more mobile out, community outreach events as well. They'll be supporting those touchpoints in the community, but they will have a home base at ninety-four Cox Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
That is the end of Haline's report.
Thank you, Avril. And again, another thank you to our, our staff who are managing haline recovery alongside their normal, regular operations, and we are incredibly grateful and appreciative. We know that. That's a significant workload on each of you, and we really appreciate the work you're doing. Thank you. All right, Nate Pennington from Planning is here for a floodplain management presentation. Nate.
Good afternoon. Hope you are doing okay today. Last time we met, we talked a little bit about floodplain management. This is going to be more of an expanded conversation today. We're going to talk about higher standards, alignment with the comprehensive plan, and things that we can do. Just an overview real quick, local ordinance alignment and strategy. We're going to talk about the community rating system, and then leave, try to leave as much time as possible for any questions you might have for follow-up purposes. All right. First of all, I want to take you back a little in time before haline. On June twelfth, we had what was called a community assistance visit. This is a big deal. This is an audit of our program. They look at just about everything that they choose to look at. So, we are sent a state representative because remember, we are a state technical cooperating. So that we are sent a state representative because remember, we are a state technical cooperating agency. So that means that the state actually conducts our audit in conjunction with FEMA standards. I want to make it very abundantly clear to everyone that our flood ordinance standards are contained within our flood ordinance. They are not conflated with other development standards. And we do not have any issues in terms of being in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program. Quite frankly, we receive the highest rating you can receive in a Community Assistance Visit. We got a clean cath. The letter on the right says so. So we had that take place before the, the event even hit. Our ordinance is largely based on the state's model ordinance, but it actually includes higher standards. We've talked about the two-foot freeboard. The two-foot freeboard for buildings that were impacted by Helene did substantially better than those that weren't built to a modern standard. And we also have enhanced protection of utilities, trade. So we already have some things in the ordinance that are considered a higher standard. And that's going to be important as we talk about the community rating system itself. Keep, keep in mind, the comprehensive plan supported joining the community rating system. So that's already baked into our long-range plan. You always want to have at least a mention of what you want to do for future changes to your ordinances in a good comprehensive plan. All right. So here's just an overview of the community rating system. What it does, there's approximately 1,700 communities across the United States. The higher points you achieve, the more of a discount you receive and you get a certain class. I'm going to show you a map in a minute and show you kind of what that looks like across North Carolina. The beauty of the program is that it provides flood insurance, policyholder discounts based on the point scale for adopting those higher standards. There is a book, it's called the NFIP CRS Coordinator's Manual, and it is over 600 pages if you are interested in any light reading. The reason I mentioned how many pages is in that book is it's a big deal to join the program. It is a lot of work. And we're going to talk about what that looks like in a minute. And to be clear again, it's consistent with both the hazard mitigation plan and the comprehensive plan. All right. Here's largely what CRS looks like in North Carolina. Lot of coastal communities. But coastal communities and the standards that they adopt are going to look a lot different than a riverine community. Quite frankly, I would take a coastal storm any day over a riverine storm. It's just, they're so much more dynamic and there's so much more going on. The gold standard in the state of North Carolina, as well as the United States, is Charlotte. Charlotte has, I believe, a rating of three. And let me go back real quick. What did I do? Okay, I broke it. Oh, here we go. Yeah, so Charlotte gets a very substantial discount. I'll double check this, but it could be as high as 30 to 35%. That's, that's a, that's a big deal. Now Charlotte has a lot more land than we do, so we're going to talk about what a customized program looks like for us. Back to this map again, largely more of a coastal, east coast, very few out west. I'm going to point out City of Asheville, Brevard. Remember for a county, a county's program is going to look a little bit different than a city's program just because of the nature of how cities are more dense. This is just a sample scoring here. The menu of things to choose from is so wide, we could talk for hours about what that, what that looks like. I just wanted to throw up a couple of different things here. You'll see everything from regulations that encourage cluster development in subdivisions. So you incentivize things. Keep them out of the floodplain, but allow higher density over here. We've already had good luck with these kind of programs. We've passed the community-oriented development. That's an incentive program. So there are ways to use a carrot and stick approach to this project, to this program. All right. So here's the process in a nutshell. It's a multi-step. There's a lot to it. For those of you all that know what that ISO rating is, this is something that the fire departments go through. The, joining the CRS is very much an iOS, ISO audit. So think of it like, we just talked about our Community Assistance Visit. This is much more involved. And they send in a whole different group when they, when they bring, bring the people in to look at our ordinance. And you start from ground zero. It will require additional staff. I will tell you right now, we are, we have three certified floodplain managers. That includes myself. I am, for lack of better words, repurposed. I am working side-by-side with my colleagues in the flood world every day. It requires a new audit that I just mentioned, which is much more enhanced. And right now, the department is largely focused on, we, we are expecting sort of a, a new raft of applications as people continue to get their insurance situation figured out. Largely, a lot of people are still fighting with their insurance companies. Public engagement, it will require a lot of coordination with our CAPE folks, community outreach, Planning Board and Board of Commissioners. And it also requires going out to the community and presenting the topic itself. It does result in less autonomy because it means that it will require a yearly audit to make sure we're in compliance. But again, the incentive is large, flood discounts for folks. Staff does recommend a tiered entry into the program because of our current focus on recovery efforts and heavy support on the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. What that could look like is the following. We could look at doing some, some measured changes to the flood ordinance over like a six to eight month horizon. We could look at, on the two-year horizon, joining a lower tier of, of the CRS program with the goal of reaching a higher tier in about three to four years to align with the new mapping cycle and the new model ordinance. I think that something like that or some combination thereof could, could be achievable. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Sorry. Can you opine a little further on the second category you just described? Will we go kind of a, a lower tier? What, what kind of, what level of effort, staff level goes into that?
Sure.
Because I think I understand the last category kind of needs to overlap with mapping of some kind, if I'm understanding you correctly. But what's, what's the middle category?
Okay. So the lower tier, if you'll look at the CRS class of 10 and nine, nine gets you a 5% discount and eight gets you a 10% discount. So the higher you go, the more work, the more restrictive. We have to be very careful as well, just due to our lack of land. We're really going to have to be careful that we don't create a new set of problems based on our goal of trying to achieve a higher class. But I do feel like we could get to a, a lower tier first and then try to get to a higher tier when the new maps and, and model ordinance arrive.
Nate, can you go back to the map real quick? That shows all of the ones.
Yes.
Interstate.
Yes.
I just wanted to show you that, Parker, because I think that's exactly the process that others are taking there. If you look along the coast, a lot of those are sevens and eights, that lower tier.
Correct.
Before they get up to a higher tier, like Mantio's at a five. So you can work your way up that way.
It's, it's, once you're in the program, it's much easier to advance because you're already used to it. You've got a staffer in place that's managing the program. And to Avril's point, that is absolutely correct. Dip your toe in the water, see how it goes, and then advance.
Is it, is the, I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around what, we dip our toe in the water. What are we, what's the toe feeling for? Is it, are we, is it, is it the staff effort that goes into kind of the regu, the regulatory piecework? Yeah.
It is the work of you as commissioners and planning board, and it is the work with the community and the development community and the residents.
To get them used to the new processes. Yeah.
Try to, to make sure that you're not doing harm. And we're also doing life safety and balancing that with the needs of our community and how we recover and rebuild as well. So think of it like, almost like we're passing a new zoning ordinance or passing countywide zoning. That's a good way to think about it. It, it's, it's what appetite do we have and what level do we achieve with there being understood? There's no right or wrong.
With the CRS discount, is that the discount for everyone who has flood insurance?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, can you just kind of flesh out a little bit more, just to help me understand? Like some of the, if we proceed with this, I think I get, I get the benefits of that. But what, what could be some of the unintended? What would be our concern that we want to make sure we don't have the unintended consequences?
Certainly. Well, with very limited property, some of what we might adopt could take properties offline. So I think we need to find the balance of what that looks like. Maybe we could do something like, all right, you got floodplain on your property. Maybe we adopt an enhanced buffer. Give folks an incentive to stay away from the more perilous areas of their property. Could go to a higher freeboard of three feet. We could have points for compensatory flood storage in a voluntary program working with folks like Jennifer Harrison and farmers that might have fields that could be inundated in order to protect downstream development. There's any number of things we can do. All I'm saying is, we have to make sure what we adopt here, it's going to look different than Greenville, South Carolina or another area, simply because of the topography and the things that we're, we're trying to achieve as well.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Nate?
I've got a couple.
Yeah, go for it.
Uh, I think they're kind of heady, so sorry, Nate. I guess two, two things come to mind. You know, one is, as, as you know, because you've, you've told me multiple times that, you know, when it floods down east, the water comes up right from the ground. And, and here, as we all know very well, it's, it's more of a, a linear, fast-moving situation when it comes to flooding, which necessitates different thinking and different kind of, I would hope, regulatory considerations. So I wanted to get your thoughts on, are there other jurisdictions out there that have kind of tweaked this?
Sure.
Because I look at, I'm looking at your map here. You know, we're not Onslow County in terms of how things flood. So I, I'm really interested in reading what other people are doing. And if that's North Carolina, that's sometimes all I get. But, but I'm, I'm interested in, I guess, other jurisdictions. Thoughts on, on how to do this?
That's easy to do. There's plenty of North Carolina communities to benchmark from. I will focus on riverine communities, obviously, because you're right. To your point, not only on the coast are you getting surge, but you also are getting water. Sometimes it comes up from the ground as well through hydrostatic pressure. Now that happened a lot in the Keys. Also, the construction's very different. We don't see a lot of homes on pilings here. We don't have real breakaway construction. We do have engineered foundations with smart vents, flood vents. There's, the thing that's so scary for us with riverine is the amount of debris and the debris dams and the backwater effects. And when you have a, an event of this size and scale. It's so hard in some areas too, because you have existing conditions that are going to remain existing. Like there's some bridges that are, have already been rebuilt, repaired. There's really just not a way to make them more resilient necessarily. So we have to be mindful of what that looks like. Fortunately, we, we see what amount of damage can occur around some of those bridges themselves. And we are going to see properties taken offline because we're going to get a lot of voluntary folks through hazard mitigation. So we want enough time also to study kind of what, what this all looks like in the recovery phase too, so that we can make well-intended and informed decisions as we move towards the CRS program.
Quick question. So Nate, thanks for your work on this. I, I just think it's important to note, you know, as you mentioned, when we have hazards in the floodway, when homes are washed away, that does create, in, in the river networks that we live in, hazards downstream. And so by, by protecting homes, by protecting infrastructure, we're protecting folks along that, that waterway. I'm, my question for you is, I, I first want to say this is great. I'm, I'm hoping we can move forward. I'm glad to see it lines up with our comprehensive planning. Appreciate all the work that you and your staff are doing, doing multiple jobs at the same time. I know it's been hard over the past six months. As I look at this community rating system, sample scoring, things that we can do, are there a lot of things that we are going to be prohibited from doing simply because the state, that's a state role? Are there certain, is it going to be, are there points that we just can't get? Because for example, building code standards are at a high level, the state's responsibility. So are, how much, we, as we, as a county, can we do? Are we going to run into a lot of obstacles where we just don't have the ability to protect citizens, protect infrastructure?
Right. So the building code is kind of, it is what it is. So that would be an area where it might be tricky. However, this is a federal program. It's embedded in the Code of Federal Regulations. So there are, and it's a whole states' rights, federal rights. But there are many things we can do. What I provided on the slide is only a sampling. There's a whole section on even protecting like county buildings, institutional buildings, having things like resilience hubs, protection of infrastructure, working with our partners at DOT and MSD and our water providers. I, I think there's plenty to choose from.
I'll look forward to doing it. Thank you so much.
Will this come back to us for a decision? Or what's, what are the next steps? Thank you.
So I was trying to get Nate to go back. One of the, this, one more, this one, this one. So the, the top bullet, there's additional staff, right? And this is not one, at least three FTEs. We did not put additional staff in our budget going into next year. So right now, this is not something that we were moving forward with right away. If the board wants us to do that, then let us know. And we'll talk about the funding and the need for funding to get additional staff. But this is one that we had not prioritized this, for this coming budget here.
That's exactly why I was asking. Thank you for that. And I think this is, is a good plan to work toward. But I think we've all acknowledged that everyone working at the county right now is doing two, three, and four, five jobs. And tackling this with limited staff now just seems to be putting an additional, additional work on already overstretched, overburdened team, in Nate's realm specifically. I, I like the tiered entry focusing of it step by step versus adding, again, additional, additional work on you all right now in a, in a year where we're looking at a challenging budget as well.
To be clear, even the step-by-step is we'll take additional staff at this moment. If, if that's something that you all wanted to prioritize, let us know that and we can go back and try to get. Right now, we're using some contract staff just to help us get through the floodplain. But we did not prioritize working on this, this year.
Avril, do you, do you think even the first tier kind of entry would require additional staff?
Or, or to take those contract services even longer. We're using contract services to get us through just the recovery part for Helene.
Yeah.
Right now, and trying to.
Just to do flood per period.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
None of the current positions that we just listed fall in the category of these three separate FTEs that you're thinking we would need to tier in?
Correct, correct. They're not even in our, our plan right now. So there'll be additional staffing that we would need to add to our county staffing.
If it's helpful to the group, I will tell you that the work in HMGP can be considered a step in the right direction of making improvements. Why? You're acquiring property. You're elevating pre-firm structures. You're demolishing structures that don't mean standards and you're building them to modern standards. All of these help as well. So we will see a big boost from this program. And we're seeing a lot of involvement in all the problem areas.
Thank you for that, Nate. That's helpful to know.
Nate, if we have further questions about what this process, because you did a great job of reducing it to nine slides, but I'm guessing there's a lot more that we could dig in on. So if you don't mind a call, I'd love to kind of pick through what that could look like. Because if we're, we do a lot of discussion about recovering and building back stronger. I, I think just having a, a long-range window of what that looks like and what that should look like, even if it's not this year, whatever it may be, I'd like to know what our options are, what the runway is for the next two or three years.
So Commissioner, instead of a separate call, what I would ask, if you have questions, I'll ask for the whole board. So if there's specific questions, you want to shoot Nate so we can bring it back. I want to make sure everyone is on board of everything that we're trying to work on. So if there's specific questions, you want to talk to Nate. Nate, if we can capture those and then we want to bring it back to make sure the full board knows.
I'm perfectly fine with that. I'm happy to fill your inbox.
Yeah.
That'd be helpful.
Question I have, if we talk about staff and going into this, how many are we talking about? Do we know yet?
Typical to run a program like the CRS is you'd have one dedicated staff position to that program. It's all, it's a compliance program. So it's a lot, it's really heavy on the audit and admin side of things, as well as any future changes that you'd want to make to the program as well. And I also wanted to put in a small plug too. We will have some components. We will have some components of resiliency built into the small area plan for Swannanoa as well, since that plan has sort of morphed since the event as well.
Commissioner, I never try to disagree with my department heads, but I would disagree that one person can run a whole program that is countywide. Then you have no bench strength, you have one person that is qualified, and should they ever take off or get sick, the program stops. So I don't want to get into a place where we have always been with a scarcity mindset, where we have one person, and then the program stops when that person is out. So I hear him trying to downplay and say, just give us one and we can start something. That's the start. But to really have a robust program, you need at least a backup.
So we're saying we would need two.
Minimum of two, sir.
And given that we're now at a unique crossroads with hazard mitigation programs right now and buyback programs, do, are there concerns that we may miss opportunities right now? Do we feel equipped to fully utilize the moment that we're in to acquire lands that can be converted into wetlands? You know, I just, I hope you'll come to us as these opportunities arise, because I think it's a really unique moment we're in right now, where we have the ability to work with buyback programs or buyout programs and really try and make, find the silver lining from what's happened.
I've already been encouraged by the first couple of batches and seeing the properties that we'd want to see, even properties that are side-by-side to previous buyout properties from the '04 event. I would use the term compensatory storage, though, rather than wetlands. You can say constructed wetlands, but to your point, I think compensatory storage is probably more appropriate for what you want to do there. We do have some bog wetlands, they're far and few between, and that's a whole other ball of wax with, you know, doing mitigation, and things keep changing at the federal level, especially Supreme Court decisions about wetlands and jurisdictional regulatory areas like that.
All right. Great questions, great discussion. Thank you, Nate.
Thank you, Avril.
All right, our last item is Rafael Baptista is with us to discuss reduce to rebuild. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners Rafael Baptista with Strategy and Innovation, here to share with you a proposal for board consideration related to reduce or rebuild around permit fees for Helene-related damage in construction residential properties. I'm not your permits director, I'm not your planning director, I'm your strategy person, but I do have with me here representatives from all the departments that'd be impacted by this, who can answer specific or technical questions. I'm here to kind of talk about the overall program. So we'll talk through the requests, details of the proposal, and have a conversation about revenue impacts from this. So the consideration is that the board would approve a fee reduction of 50% for Buncombe County residential permits associated with documented Helene damage or destroyed primary residences for the dates of June 1st through December 31st of 2025. We included June 1st as the starting date because that would provide staff with sufficient time to get this program up and running. There's some legwork that would need to be done. Additionally, air quality, which would be impacted by this, is managed by a separate governing body that would have to approve this. They would have a board meeting after you all approved, and they have to provide 30 days notice per statute before they can make any fee changes. So this will allow us to better align with their effective date, which would be probably about a week after this effective date. So thinking a little bit about what properties would be eligible for the fee reduction, looking at primary residences, so this is going to be a residence where the person's staying there, the person living there, is registered to vote there, that's where, they're the ones on the utility bill, that's where the driver's license is for, that's where they're putting us the address on their taxes when they're paying their taxes, so really their primary residence. And looking at properties that received a damage rating from either Buncombe County or from FEMA. And that damage rating as written, this criteria could be destroyed, significant, moderate, or minor damage. So it's a relatively, if there's any damage, that property could potentially be eligible. This is going to be for residential properties, handleless residential projects. And, sorry, one keynote here on the last bullet is, this would be for repairs and renovations for the damage. This would not extend to any fees or permits related to an expansion of the property. In terms of a regional comparison, we did look at our regional partners to see what other folks were doing. So the city of Asheville, the town of Black Mountain, Haywood County, and Mitchell County are not charging fees for Helene damage at this moment. Henderson County, Yancey County, and the town of Waynesville are charging normal full fees at this point. So this would affect four different departments. Those would be permits and inspections, air quality, planning, and then onsite wastewater inspections, which is part of environmental health. It would be a 50% reduction across those four different departments. Important to note here that air quality and permits inspections are enterprise funds, so their expenditures are based off of their revenues. They do not receive funding from the general fund. Planning and environment health are covered through the general fund. This is a non-existent exhaustive list of permits that would be included, but really looking at what permits would be required if you wanted to do a rebuild, a repair, or renovation of your property. So it just gives you a little sense of the different types of permits you could be talking about. For some departments, this is going to be a very narrow list of permits, and for some other departments, it'll be a broader, larger list of permits. And we'll get into kind of what an example scenario for a resident, a property owner would be in a future slide. But there is the link to the full fee schedule, if you're interested in seeing all the fees that could potentially be eligible. So this is the sample fee profile to give you a sense of the impact for the individual property owner who's trying to do the repairs or renovation of their property that's damaged by Tropical Storm Helene. So there are four different types of permits we're really looking at for. For almost all of them, they're going to be looking at a residential building permit, and depending on the size of the job, it's going to be between $80 and $679 for the residential building permits. In a small minority of these cases, there will be septic permits required, as they have septic tanks that'll need to do some work on. Either the septic tank was damaged, or due to the different work, they'll have to build some new septic storage. That would be about $550. Planning permits would be between $25 and $100. Then your air quality permits would be between $25 and $480. So again, depending on the size of the project, a property owner's looking somewhere between $130 and $1,890 in permit fees for a repair or renovation or rebuild job. So if you apply a 50% reduction in those fees, the range would then go down to $65 to $945. So it's a pretty broad range that someone could fall into, but that gives you the sense on the lower, in the higher end, what this could mean for an individual property owner. So in terms of fiscal impacts, there's definitely a fiscal impact to this. One thing that's important to note was, there was the Disaster Recovery Act of 2024, which the General Assembly approved and the governor signed into law, which really meant that we were not collecting permit revenue between September 26th and December 31st. This is not just for Helene damage, but really any permit revenue. So that meant that roughly three months of revenue that we had budgeted will not become, we will not collect on. So we're operating from that scenario. There will be additional permit revenue that's, happens due to Helene, because all this permit activity from Helene was unanticipated. But we still believe that even with that initial activity, we will not get back to the budgeted amounts of money for permit activity. You'll see that on the next slide. So a couple important notes here are, one, you see for each group here, for each department, for permits, air quality, planning, and then environmental health, there are three columns. The first column, the taller column in each case, is what we had budgeted for them for FI 25. The second column is what budget currently projects they will receive in revenue for fiscal year 25. Really important note here, that second column, that is the number that was baked into the revenue forecast, so you were provided at your last budget workshop. The third column is our best attempt at understanding the financial impact of reduce to rebuild. That was not baked into your financial forecast. So those would be a reduction in revenues from what you saw at your last budget workshop. This program would extend through two fiscal years. It would cover one month of fiscal year 25 and six months of fiscal year 26. We don't have a way to really understand how much would hit in 26 versus in 25, just the way the volume of permits is going on. So these are, again, best attempts, but what you're looking at is a loss of around half a million dollars in permanent inspections revenue from this program, a loss of around $125,000 or so in air quality, a loss around $100,000 in planning, and then a loss of $20,000 in revenue for onsite and wastewater. Permits and inspections and air quality would pull from their fund balances to offset these costs. The general fund would have to subsidize the costs within planning and environmental We anticipate that there would be no action taken over the next six months. We believe based on the volume of properties that are, that have a damage rating and applying some back-of-the-napkin math, that the revenue you could look at from permit, permit activity for Helene damage would be somewhere between $1.2 and $1.7 million. If we were to apply reduce to rebuild, that revenue amount would drop to somewhere between $641,000 to $843,000. Again, don't have a good way of really understanding across the six, seven months where that would hit, but this is kind of what we anticipate over that period of time. So kind of in summary, you know, this program would allow us to focus on rebuilding. It is narrowly tailored, focusing really on residential properties. It aligns with what several of our regional partners are doing. It does reduce, create a reduction in revenue. It is going to create an additional burden on staff, who's going to have to manage this work. And then the financial impacts, which are currently unbudgeted, would be felt over two fiscal years. Open up for y'all to discuss.
I want to clarify, Rafael, that air quality would pull from their reserves, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then the general fund would have to absorb the other reductions, which could potentially mean that we would be looking at reductions elsewhere in the general fund to cover these.
Yes, ma'am.
Also, though, I think permits would pull from their reserve, too. Isn't that what you said as well?
Air quality. But I would say that air quality is rather thin. Their margins are very thin, so.
Okay.
And we know that with the loss of Duke, Duke was their biggest revenue source for air quality, but when those dots came down, that revenue is much thinner for air quality. So we will probably need to fund them in a future year.
Okay. That's helpful to know.
But when you look at the list that you showed us, go back to the graph, the way you had the graph for permits, the three, the graph showing what the reduction would be. Yep, damn. Overall, it looks like we'll be down a million dollars, right?
In that, in that rough general framework, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
I have a quick clarifying question. So obviously, we've seen a decline in requests and permits based on what we expected, but a lot of these repair requests, we would have never have seen, right? Like, these are, these are new requests that had the storm not happened, we wouldn't receive these requests. So there's a balance there of reduction from folks just not building after a storm, or not making additions to their homes, or building up their buildings after a storm, balanced with the increase of people needing to rebuild. Am I understanding that correctly? There's, there's a balancing act there happening?
Yes, sir. So there was that three months where we were not collecting any revenue. There are some slowdowns, some new construction and some other projects. So that balanced with activity with Helene. And a new construction is going to generally generate more revenue on the permit side, and then a rebuild or a renovation would as well.
Any other questions for Rafael? Thank you so much. Commissioners, do any of you have any open discussion items for us? All right, if not, we will adjourn until 5:00 PM. Thanks, everyone. Virgin.